Good evening. This is the selectman's meeting for Goffstown, the 25th of June. First item is our Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will postpone the review acceptance of the minutes from last Monday. They were just distributed to us 20 minutes ago and we haven't had a chance to really read them. Next item is announcements, and I have probably five. First one deals with road construction, and this is in Pinnardville. The drainage work that we've been doing for the last two months in Pinnardville has been completed. This week that we're in right now, the Public Works will do the final curb installation, the granite curbs, and that will allow them to then pave the roadside of the curb and any driveway extensions and patching of sidewalks. Along most of Mass Road, some people have noticed the traffic lights not always detecting vehicles or incorrectly detecting vehicles if they're already driven over and made their turn. This is because when many of the traffic loops that sensed the vehicles were only a small loop when they were reinstalled after the sewer line construction. It's our intention that once, when we're involved with the asphalting of the entire Mass Road this August, the road will be milled and shimmed, then the correct specification of all the traffic loops will be installed, and then the final asphalt will be put down. This is because a temporary repair of any loop costs just as much money as a final sensing loop, and our plan is to do them only once. So your patience is appreciated. Next item is also a traffic alert. This is on Elm Street in the vicinity from Glen Lake School to Page Hill Road. That's about four tenths of a mile. The Goffstown Water Precinct will be installing a water main. That work will commence on the 9th of July, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., lasts approximately four weeks, and they do anticipate one lane of traffic in the construction zone. And once again, 9th of July for four weeks. There was at Glen Lake waterfront area, there was an advisory due to high levels of bacteria On a reinspection of the bacteria, it was found to be in acceptable levels, and the advisory has been removed. And if you want to enjoy swimming at our town swimming pools, Roy Pool and Bernard Pool, they are open. They're seven days a week, from 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. There are blocks of time that are set for various activities in those pools. From 1:00 p.m. to 4:00, it's open swim for all ages. Then for one hour, 4:00 to 5:00, it's family swim, means that children must be accompanied by a parent or guardian. Then for one hour, 5:00 to 6:00, it's adult swim, 18 years and older. And for the last two hours of the day, 6:00 to 8:00, it's once again family swim, and children would be accompanied by the parent or guardian. Any other announcements the other board members may have heard of?
I have one. The concert that was scheduled for Sat-- this past Saturday had to be canceled due to the thunderstorms that we experienced, and once I get a new date from the band, then I will certainly will reschedule that, and I'll fill out the forms accordingly. We're just going to shoot for either a Thursday, Friday, or Saturday night in the month of July. As you know, we have another one scheduled in August, so we're going to try to separate them out a little bit. So once I get that date, I'll let everyone know.
And it will still be at the high school?
It'll still be at the high school, yeah.
And bring your lawn chairs, whatever date that is.
Right.
Thank you. At this time, I have scheduled 10 past 6 o'clock, public comment. There are no members of the public in the audience, so we'll move on to the next item. Town Administrators' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's no meeting next Monday, but your meeting schedule is in your packets. Tomorrow night is the Fire Station Improvement Committee. Then on Wednesday night, there are two meetings, HDC and Conservation, and then Thursday is Planning Board. Consensus folder tonight includes accounts payable manifest of $43,688.94, a payroll withholding manifest for $141,950.83, employee status report, non-union colas, event permit for Goffstown Village Farmers Market on Sundays, July through October on Church Street, drainage easement for MAP 2 Lot 3-1, junkyard license renewal for Hebert's Junkyard, Mary Lou Preschool two-year lease, and letters to the churches in the villa.
So the fourth bullet, non-union colas, that also includes incentive. It was a voucher or a warrant in there for various incentive pays?
Yes, that were previously approved by the board, yes. There are not steps for everyone, it's just colas for everyone plus any incentives that were prior approval.
I didn't know whether that needed to be separately mentioned, but it was just part of the package to be signed in.
Yes. Those forms are already signed.
I'll make a motion to accept a consensus folder.
Second.
Those in favor of approval of the consensus folder?
Aye.
Aye.
That's 4-0. Selectman Adams is not here this evening.
Correspondent, you have a letter from Aquatic Control Technology regarding treatment in Nemaski Lake. I sent this off to Larry Pilat, who's doing millfowels extraction and monitoring at both We received this letter as an abutter. Since there's no really public swimming area down there, I'm going to assume that all the abutters received this notice, but do you want it placed on the town's website also?
Selectman Davanza?
Well, I guess that raises a concern that I had, that now I noticed that the only reason we received it was because we're in a butter. And I guess that comes down to the point that I've been bringing up all along, is that we actually have no public access to it.
Yeah, you access it at Manchester, that's the public boat much.
But Goffstown has no public access.
We have two parcels that front Nemaski Lake, but they're not-
Developed for-
Developed for vehicle access.
Right.
That's what I meant. I mean, we received it because we own those parcels, but there was no place, no provision for any resident of Goffstown to enter Nemaski Lake.
In Goffstown.
In Goffstown.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, the Dumont Park Boat Ramp? I mean, they're allowed to put the boats in there, there's a boat ramp there. I mean, we use it for the fire department, fire service. I mean, it's a public-
Refresh Dumont Park.
Go down between-
Is that the one off of Electric Avenue?
Negative, sir. Go down Dennis Park or Lynchfield Park, it's the section that ties the two parks together, that dirt section. There's a boat ramp there and a parking area.
But it's privately owned.
Okay, it may be pri-- yeah.
Privately owned. If Goffstown residents wanted to go down there, and let's say you got a dozen Goffstown residents that wanted to go down there and use that boat ramp and start parking there, you get complaints.
Would the board feel it would be appropriate for this announcement to be posted on our website?
As an FYI, I think it wouldn't, yeah.
And for the folks viewing this, we're talking about Nemaski, the upper reaches of Nemaski Lake, which is still basically a river environment. On or about the 9th of July, a herbicide will be applied, and it's being paid for by the Nemaski Lake Association. And let's see, there'll be temporary water restrictions on the day of treatment, no swimming for 24 hours within 200 feet of the areas being treated.
Just an update on fuel prices. Your propane is fixed at $1.49 per gallon with Eastern Propane. This is a one-year contract starting July 1st. Heating oil is a fixed price of $2.94.5 with fuller oil for heating season starting $9.112. And gasoline is a fixed price of 30,000 gallons with Dennis Burke for $2.866 per gallon. This is approximately one year supply, and that starts immediately. Diesel, we still have 16,000 gallons on our current contract, so we are okay for probably two to three months, but we're watching the prices for the best rates. Bid award for road salt, the Public Works Director recommends awarding bid to the successful state in New Hampshire bidder, Granite State Minerals, at $56.76 per ton, which is one cent more than last year. He also recommends backup vendor, Eastern Minerals, at the same price in the event the supply is an issue.
By backup, does that mean that if the primary vendor is out of salt and we need it, then he can call the backup vendor to, and at the same price?
Right.
And I also assume that means if for some reason or other they can't deliver it when we need it, we could probably go to the other vendor.
Right.
Either he's out or can't deliver it because of other obligations.
Right.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation, Public Works Director.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Bid award for public work uniforms. There were two bidders for uniforms, Gene K. and UniFirst of Nashua. The Public Works Director recommends award to the little bidder, UniFirst, and you have a spreadsheet enclosed at 4F in your packet.
I'll make a motion to accept the Department Head's recommendation with respect to uniforms.
Second.
Do I hear a second? I'm sorry. Selectman Davanza, thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Gross, the previous one. Salt, last two times I attended the Budget Committee, they were inquiring about the whole process of us buying salt, so just could you mention that we've now entered into a contract for so many, so much salt? We piggyback on the state contract, just for their education. We're ahead of schedule, that's nice.
Yes, great to selectman's discussion.
Listen, at 6:30, we're expecting representatives of the local government center to brief this board on the health insurance, and so we're waiting for that to occur. So in the meantime, let's move ahead to the selectmen's discussion. No?
Hello?
Would anybody like any new business to discuss? And we have one. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to comment on the fire department this weekend. We had a RIT team class that was held in conjunction with the New Boston Fire Department.
A what team?
RIT, Rapid Intervention Team. It's a group of highly trained, highly skilled firefighters. If we have a major collapse, building collapse in an area of a building, these members of the fire department are trained to go in and remove the victims or the firefighters in trouble, whether they go through breaching a wall, open the door up, however, whatever it may be. It was a 20-hour class, it was attended, like I say, by a total of about 20, 24 firefighters, a combination of firefighters from Gofftown and New Boston. Bedford was nice enough to graciously give us the building to train in, the old Sheraton Way Fair. We did extensive training there. There was a lot learned. Both departments benefited quite a bit by it. And that was pretty much it, very active weekend in the fire service as well. Two jet ski accidents on Glen Lake. We had the helicopter in here the other night for a motor vehicle accident. We flew somebody out, and it's a busy weekend for the fire service.
Question.
Selectman Davanza?
When you say they let you use the building for training, does that mean you guys cut holes in the walls?
We cut holes in the floor, breached the walls.
You have it on fire?
No fire. It's the only thing we didn't do, no fire.
Committee reports. I attended the Budget Committee. Basically, it was just reports of the representatives to the various town departments, boards, and what they have found out from the department heads. There was no budgetary discussions for the remainder of that meeting. Next item was library trustees. I attended the library trustees meeting. No unusual motions were made and were discussed. Park and Rec.
Parks and Rec meeting was held June 20th at the Parks and Recreation Building. Discussions on the Barnard Track, there was quite a debate as to what repairs will be done, how we intend to make the repairs to the track, will it be a temporary repair, you know, a major retract, a major repair to the track. There's quite a bit of debate going on about that. The Parks and Rec and the school board are going to try to sit down and have a meeting. They talked about field usages for the Saret Field, Roy Street, Louis Field, and the Barnard Field, where the Barnard Park Field is getting quite a bit of work. They're going to try to share the workload amongst the fields. The Louis Street Field has not seen much activity. They want to try to start pushing some of the stuff off there. If baseball is not going to be its primary objective, recommendation was cede the entire field and make it for soccer, lacrosse, football, whatever the field, you know, will need.
Presently, it's laid out for baseball.
Yes, sir. It's laid out for baseball. It's been quite a while since they've done some baseball there, so they're trying to divide all the parks. The Barnard Park and the Saret Field have had extensive usage to them with the football on the far field and the soccer, lacrosse. They're doing some seeding in the fields to try to get the fields to come back, to grow up and grow in. So they're going to, they reassess their fields, and they're going to try to start moving the fields around to different games, to different fields, to try to, you know, get the fields back up where they're at. There was questions on, they'd like to purchase a 20-by-20 party tent. There was a discussion to downsize it to probably two 10-by-10 tents. They would use it for the concert or the race, just so they have someplace for shelter, for water, or use it for different things for the Parks and Rec. And the CIP, they talked a little bit about CIP. I didn't make the CIP meeting, but maybe Selectman Gross can share a little bit on that after. That was it for that one.
Thank you. Was, did we have an attendee of CIP?
Yes, I attended CIP last week. It was their last round of presentations. They'll start deliberations, I think it's later on in July. Had two departments present last week. One was the Police Department. Chief Sullivan presented the capital needs for the Police Department, and then Rick Willhelme, Director of Parks and Rec, he presented for Parks and Rec. Do you want me to go over those items? Is that necessary, or is it, they're going to go through the process? We have not even seen them, so.
It was a presentation to the CIP Committee, and there's many more presentations to come as they deliberate and make decisions.
Admin presented too.
Admin presented too, I'm sorry. Derek was there as well, I apologize. I always think of you and Derek was there, he was the first one to kick off, so. And those are the typical ones that we've heard, finance, software, and some others, so.
We've completed the agenda, that's very good.
You're not looking for a motion to adjourn, are you?
No, that would be, that'd be rather rude to our guests who've traveled here. It's close enough to 6:30. Is everyone in your party of a ride?
Yeah.
Okay, and Sue, we invited some of our department heads and union reps.
No, HR Committee.
Are they?
The Human Resource Committee, so there are some reps here from the HR, and some department heads are here also. All of us are here.
Ladies, please come to the desks so you can be speaking into a microphone.
Did everyone get a packet?
And do you want to use, do you have a projector, or is that?
We do not. I brought it just in case you need it, but if you don't need it-
Oh, okay.
We'll get it.
Could you remove the projector?
I can get this out of the way.
And then we'll introduce who we are here.
Who's presenting for us, Wendy?
Oh, I thought it was Wendy. I'm Debbie Clayton, Benefits and Coverage Coordinator for the Town of Goffstown from the New Hampshire Local Government Center, and with me this evening is Wendy Lee Parker, Deputy Executive Director for Risk Pool Operations, and Carrie Horn is your Health and Safety Advisor. So if all of you have the folder of information that was delivered to you, I'm going to start with the information on the left-hand side.
Excuse me, Deborah, and the subject is our health insurance. I just want to reinforce that to the people viewing by TV.
Oh, okay, thank you. What had happened, Sue reached out to a team of us at Local Government Center asking for us to present to you this evening with a specific list of agenda items, a specific list of needs, and I believe that we've met all of them this evening. And Carrie and I certainly do have a planned schedule or a planned outline of our presentation, unless you strongly feel after reviewing the information, is there something that you wanted to start with? Kind of wanted to give you that opportunity.
No, I've, yes, I reviewed the handouts and read ahead, and I assume most of our board members have, so please just-
Okay, thank you.
Lead us through a logical presentation of a very complicated subject.
Thank you very much.
And if you have questions as we go through, please stop us, interrupt, and we'd be happy to answer them as we go through, because you're right, it can be a little complex and a little overwhelming at times, so we're absolutely, want to make sure you get the information that you need this evening.
On the, the first piece on the left-hand side is just your five-year rate increase history. For those of you who may or may not be aware, as well as the viewers on the television, the Town of Gofftown is individually rated, and for our purposes, that means that you have more than 100 eligible individuals for the medical insurance, and due to that fact, we place a greater impact on your pricing and your rate increases year after year on your own utilization as employees, spouses, dependents, et cetera. So your anniversary is January 1, and these are the increases associated. So overall, your increase for 2012 was 9.9%, 2011, 6.1%, 2010, 17.4%, 2009, 3.1%, and a decrease of 1.7% in 2008.
If we were to set the questions. Do we have a choice of being individually rated? We go into bids with other communities? Is there the possibility of us being rated along with the Gofftown School District? Do they have X amount to try to spread risk?
You absolutely can. In fact, we have many school districts and towns who are joining together for health insurance. It's really helpful when you have a common goal to work together, so we find that, and Carrie, I think, is going to talk a little bit later, about wellness programs and health management. Those programs really are how you affect the bulk of your claims experience, because about 85% of your rate is based on your own claims experience. So as you're able to leverage both the school system that has many health resources available to them with the municipalities, that is certainly something that we recommend. What we don't recommend is picking random communities to join together, because that's really what you're doing through Local Government Center. You are banding together with all the municipalities throughout, and school districts and counties throughout the state that participate with us. So you are pooling to a certain extent. So when we say you're individually rated, there's still a lot of pooling features that go with that. But when you're either doing negotiations, or you're going through setting a tax rate, having similar benefits with shared experience and the incentives to improve health as a community, it's certainly beneficial.
And what percentage of our overall rate is based upon the individual group's experience, say, versus the, what you said, the pooling or the sharing of, say, all of LGC?
Sure. Let me just take a look here, and I can tell you. So you are, for your size group, your own claims experience is about 38% of what we use for experience in your rate. So you're a fairly small community in the health insurance industry, so it's about 38%.
Okay. The reason why I ask this question is that, and I can't speak for the rest of the board members, but to me, it would be important to have a larger subgroup or a larger rating pool if we combine with, say, the school district, because it would hopefully reduce some of the volatility.
Mm-hmm.
The more folks that you have, it should reduce it, you know, so if you have a few people or family members in our individual pool that get sick or experience, you know, claims, yes, when sometimes you see these 17.4 one year, 3.1 the next, from a budgetary perspective, I would personally, I could live with more level-type increases knowing that that's what's going on than seeing the, you know, an EKG monitor of trying to budget. And I think you get that when you can maybe broaden your pool a bit.
Yep, so there's two pieces to that. One is, LGC Health Trust has two rating pools. We have a January calendar year cycle, and we have a July rating cycle. So I believe the school district is on a fiscal year cycle. So the July grouping actually has many more employees as a whole. So when we talk about smoothing rate increases, that pool is bigger to start. So just your point, exactly, that that pool tends to see a little bit more on average increases that are a little bit more flat as they go. Not that they don't have their spikes, depending what's happening, but it's a little bit smoother. So if you do look at combining with the school, I would suggest that you look at moving from your calendar year basis to a fiscal year basis, because that would give you some of that smoothing. The other thing that we're seeing, not only in your group, and Debbie has some information that she can share with you, but in our groups overall, we are seeing an increase in the number of catastrophic cases that are happening, as well as the dollar value of those catastrophic cases that are happening, and that's certainly happening here in Goffstown individually.
No, just to contribute to what Wendy was talking about, combination, combining with the school district, if you wanted to explore that avenue, we'd also want to invite Dunbarton as well as the Town of New Boston, since that's the way the school district is set up. And I think we've discussed it at their board level at some point. When we initially get together and we start having these discussions, you can initially tell, well, already SAU 19 has higher, has a higher rate level than you folks here. Well, then that kind of just ends the discussions from there, because you're always starting with New Boston, Dunbarton, Gofftown, SAU 19, you've got four different, potentially four different sets of rates. So we can definitely start there to see if you wanted to pursue it any further.
Plus, they must offer different plans, right?
Well, you remain independent in your benefit plan selection.
Oh, okay.
So how it would work is if you did decide to pursue it, even looking at it for informational purposes, we would receive letters from each community-
we would receive letters from each community, and we would extract the claims data for all interested parties and come up with, with a rate level.
Yeah, but you don't have to go to see the same plans.
Correct. You remain independent in that fashion. But what doesn't remain independent is that the towns would need to change their anniversary date from January to July.
Carrie. One of the other handouts, I believe, being in the category called individually rated. It was because our, our employee base and family base is over 100. But that, it extends up to what, 999? And so that's, we probably never would reach the, the next tier of.
Actually, it's a gradual scale. So the credibility factor that he asked about, you're about 40 percent. As you approach, you go from your size to 99. It's a scale, so it, that's where it ranges. So if you added the school district, it would, it would go. Yeah, absolutely.
If we were to explore that opportunity with SAU 19 and New Boston and Dunbarton, I would assume that even if, say, our particulars, our group's experience was, say, worse than theirs hypothetically, we would probably have to look at maybe a five-year trend line. And again, their advantage would be, again, reduced volatility in their rate increases because we're spreading the risk a bit more. So that would be the, their, their, if we're trying to promote this, that's what we would try to convince them, or vice versa. If we were, even if we were in a better position, we might wanna think about it, because all it would take would be one or two bigger cases, you know, claims experiences here, and our rate would jump. As opposed to being able to spread that amongst, you know, a few more hundred people.
And I just would wanna point out that in the health insurance industry, even combining with the school district, you're still considered a fairly small group. So it's not gonna take out the volatility completely. But I think it allows more conversations and more resources to be shared, and it also does contribute to that flattening out. With the group your size, for both the, in the town, three of you would be coming from the January pool, and only the school is currently in the July pool. So I think that is an advantage of in itself as well. But it's really leveraging those resources so that you might have joint wellness competitions, or you could do health fairs together. You could really leverage that opportunity.
Just a follow-up question?
Yes.
Just for clarity. When you look at these, or the large spike from 2010, that's on the graph that you provided to us, is there more than one thing, though, that can contribute to that? That might, that spike may not necessarily be due to claims, because we're self. I forget the, the exact term, self, not self-insured, but because of the, of the claims rating, because we're one, we have the over 100 employees. But this increase could be other reasons.
Well, it's all relative to claims experience. So it may not be the claims experience of Goffstown, because again, we're only using about 40 percent of your, weighting your experience by about 40 percent. So depending on what was happening in the overall January pool, for example, 60 percent of your rate is based on that overall experience with all of those employees. So it doesn't necessarily mean that the town is doing something right or wrong. It's a combination of the two pieces put together.
And it's very possible, even if we were in a larger pool that we've been discussing, we could've still had that increase?
Yes. Yep, it helps smooth it, but it doesn't take it away.
Thank you.
It is likely that in 2010, your claims experience were worse than the average, because our overall increase for 2010 was 15.7. So you were higher than the overall at that point. So you, you know, just had potentially a bad claims year.
Have you done a chart like this with the school district? It'd be curious to see what it looked like.
I'm sure I have. I can definitely share it.
Thank you.
The next piece is answering the question of how do we compare to others in our like-size, not so close neighboring towns, but who you might compare yourselves with. And all of this information taken on the next sheet is from the 2011 Wage, Salary, and Benefit Survey from Municipalities, which is available right from our website. You'll see on the top, the Town of Goffstown and the two medical plans that you make available to your employees, and the contribution for single, two-person, and family. You offer 100 percent contribution for the single plan, and then 90 percent for either a two-person or family plan. I selected Hookset, Bedford, and Hudson, and Bo. And you'll see here the listed benefits that they provide to their employees. And then to the right, how do they contribute? What is the employee, or employee contribution? And this is just based on what's provided in the report. Benefit offerings can vary by what bargaining unit has what, which choices. I did learn late this afternoon that if you look at the Town of Hookset, that top plan with the $1 mail order benefit, the one, the first in the row, is going to be removed effective August 1st. Their fire union negotiated to switch from that plan, so that plan will be no longer available effective August 1st. So as you can see, these things are constantly changing.
And I'd just like to point out, on the way that you have structured your benefits, you've done a lot of the things that we're going around to communities and recommending. So you should take great pride in knowing that you have made prescription drug changes. You're at a $20 copayment level. So those are the things that we have been promoting to help make sure that we have proper utilization, that people are using the mail service, and Debbie's gonna describe some of your mail order usage. You're doing a lot of things very correctly. You do have some very large catastrophic claims that have contributed to the rates that you have. And those are going to happen, and you really, we try to prevent them with a lot of the programs Carrie's gonna about. But in a group your size, you are gonna have those, and they hopefully aren't every-year occurrences, but they are going to happen periodically. And looking through your history, especially in the last couple of years, that is something that has impacted you greatly.
And specifically throughout the materials, I did see exactly what Wendy just said. And I, I will definitely make a point to, to highlight how you've done, you're headed in the exact right direction, as, as we recommend. In looking at Town of Hudson's plan design structure, that's not for lack of trying, if you will. They've had, they've struggled with union negotiations for several years in a row now. So they're constantly asking for benefit options. I'm constantly providing them with the choices similar to what you have. And they're just not making any leeway with their union. So that's, again, not for lack of trying, that they don't want to be in those plan designs that they're, they're in now.
Those are the more expensive designs.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen those.
J1, I see.
I haven't seen that in like 10 years here.
We still have quite a population. And the issue with those is that even if the employee is trying to make all the right decisions and going to the lowest-cost provider, the provider discounts are just not there with those contracts. So you can have two employees going to the same provider for the same service, and if one's on an indemnity plan and one's on an HMO, what the physician or the hospital charges back to Anthem through their contract is going to be significantly different. And that's why I say the plans that you have are those most aggressive provider discounts. And so in addition to looking at that, having your employees also choose lower-cost providers is working.
I have a question. Trying not to look, look in this as a, in a vacuum, but, and you may, you may not know this. This is for the most, this is LGC. But do you have any industry data that, that shows that in the, say, the private sector? What are, what are the benefits? You know, we're, we're looking to, how shall we say? Have competitive benefits that will, you know, attract quality employees to the town and also to retain quality employees. So you have to have that, that package, that you're, you're competing with the private sector as well. So when I see this, it's not unusual, because I have taken a look at what surrounding towns are, are doing. But then I, what we don't always have is what is the private sector doing? And the private sector, from my own anecdotal evidence, suggests that it's far different.
It is, I don't have any actual experience, but when we go around in meetings like this and have selectmen talk to us about what they have in their own positions, you're right, the benefit structures are so different, they're almost hard to compare.
And I think we understand that, that's a policy decision that boards have to.
But it's mostly HSAs and HRAs is kind of where things are going. There's really not a copayment structure any longer. There's definitely not indemnities any longer. So it's mostly HRAs and HSAs.
The next piece is the Cost and Utilization Summary. This is an executive report that we're able to get from Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. And it has a lot of good information, and I, a couple of pieces that definitely jumped out at me that are, make you different than others, actually in a couple of different areas. This is a claims period of May of 2011 through April of 2012. And it compares your current period to your prior period. It wants to show you last versus current. The prior period is May of 2010 through April of 2011. This does exclude, the top left-hand corner, you'll see excludes MC3. That means that it excludes all of the claims data of your overage 65 retirees. Quickly summarizing the membership, it talks about males versus females, age. You're younger than our, than our average in the January pool, the January pool norms. Cost-sharing summary, this is one that I thought, right on, you're exactly, you're going in the right direction. I'm sure most of you have heard the term "skin in the game" when it comes to health insurance. $20 is not a deterrent necessarily for someone to visit a physician if they need to visit a physician. But if they're accessing, say, physical therapy, and they can, say, go two or three times a week, it's their choice. Well, do they wanna spend $40 a week, or $60 a week? That's where the consumerism comes into play. There's skin in the game, when it makes sense to do so. Same thing with purchasing prescriptions, asking about generic alternatives, asking about lower-cost options. Because when you see the numbers here, under Member Paid, the member's cost share of medical dollars paid is 3.9 percent. When it says members, that means your employees and all of their dependents are paying 3.9 percent. Compared to our January pool norm is paying 3.5. Normally, when I sit at a group like you, you folks, it's under three, it's in the twos. So the fact that your employees are paying more, they've got skin in the game, they've still got very comprehensive benefits. They have skin in the game, they're paying more, they're paying more than the average. But again, still very comprehensive benefits.
Now, is there data on that outside of government? In terms of what is the typical, like, I often hear that, let's use, not copay, but, you know, contribution level, that, you know, you saw a lot of 90-10s, you saw a couple of, but I'm hearing that in the, in the private sector, it's more like 80-20, even 75-25. In terms of this cost share, do you have any data outside of, say, government benefits that we, or you can even point us in the right direction to try to get that research?
Yeah, let me see if I can get you some research. We don't tend to look at it versus, public versus private. We compare other governmental states of things.
Right, and I appreciate that, but as for us, you know, we're trying to make decisions for our budgets to try to be, you know, fair to our employee group, but also so that we can sustain what the taxpayers can afford. And that would be helpful if we could get a little guidance as to what, what else is out there.
Yeah, let me see if there's some resources. We do have a consulting firm that has a lot of private-sector clients. And let me ask them what they have for information.
Thank you.
It's definitely easier for us to access the public resources, because it's, again, always available to the public. The private, it's not so easy. In fact, I was working with a gentleman who, he was an elected official, and he, in fact, at his employer, was trying to get information from his own employer to share with our group, and he was having trouble. So I think it's difficult overall to get information from the private sector. But we can get statistics, I'm sure. The next box or the next area is Medical Claims by Setting, broken down by inpatient, outpatient, and professional. Current period, prior period, than the January pool norm. You'll see that you've seen a decrease in inpatient claims, which is, which is a good thing, and an increase in outpatient claims, which is also a good switch to go into, a good direction to go in. And then an increase in, increase in professional claims, very, very typical, when I see a typical group. Your inpatient costs represent 7.4 percent of your total claims. Your inpatient has decreased 51.2 percent. Outpatient costs have increased by 55.3 percent. But overall, as we all know, outpatient costs are by far less costly than inpatient costs. And your professional costs have an increase of 35.7 percent. And we break it down further in the next section.
One question here.
Right. For our benefit and everybody else that's listening, could you explain those three?
Sure.
What they are?
Yep, that's exactly where I'll go to next. Inpatient claims are summarized by medical inpatient claims, surgical inpatient claims, and maternity claims. Outpatient claims are summarized under the categories of surgery, radiology, emergency room, and laboratory services. And professional claims are broken out in terms of office visits, outpatient surgeries, and radiology. So inpatient claims, outpatient claims, and professional claims. Under the inpatient claims below, I saw for sure, when you look at the current year, you have your medical, surgical, and your maternity care. Your maternity claims have definitely increased over the prior year from 16 percent to 35.4 percent. And your medical claims increased, surgical claims did decrease. Another one that I saw a split in is for your outpatient claims, and that's for radiology. You had an increase, your prior year was a 19.8 percent overall for your radiology outpatient, and up to a 28.8 for your current year. So that's, that jumped out at me as an increase to, to be aware of. But it's not uncommon. It's very typical for physicians to order a CAT scan or x-ray, and then say, oh, let's be doubly sure, let's order an MRI. Very typical, very traditional.
And that may be related to some of the catastrophic claims that you're having as we dug into the types of categories they were. Some of them call for a little bit more frequent radiology services, so that may be the reason for that. You do have a younger population, which may lead to the maternity, because you, as you can see, our norm is about 9 percent. And you're significantly above that. Even the prior year, you were double that almost. So that is certainly an area. So we have a couple of programs that are geared to making sure that we have healthy starts. There's a Future Moms program through Anthem. Those may be something that the HR Committee or through Human Resources that you wanna promote, because we certainly, we recently have had some claims for premature infants. They can run upwards of a million dollars. So by getting them involved in that program, we can't always eliminate that high claim, but we certainly wanna make sure that that mom and the baby get the best start. And then we also see for individuals who go through those programs, a decreased utilization in ER during the first three to four years of that child's life. So it has a lot of positive benefits, and it's a really great program to send someone through. So that may be something that because of your claims experience, you would wanna promote very heavily.
Under all claims, nothing jumped out. I mean, professional, pretty typical, pretty norm, no spikes there. For the all claims, the top 1 percent of your claimants drive 33.7 percent. It's a little higher than the 31.2 percent pool norm. 5.3 percent of your members had no paid claims. That compares to 10.6 for the January pool norm. We would like that to be zero. We don't want any of our members to have no medical care whatsoever, because that means they haven't even had a physical. So having a low number there is very, very good, as opposed to sometimes you want a higher percentage of participation. That's not one of them. The average cost for your members who had submitted a claim was $4,031.61. This compares to $5,120.33, so your average claim is lower, so that's another good thing to note. Under your disease classification categories, the top three disease categories, or the major practice categories for the Town of Goffstown, were the ones that we see all the time as 1, 2, and 3. You're not necessarily in the 1, 2, 3 order, but you have malignant neoplasm, orthopedics and rheumatology, and cardiology. What jumped out at me is that 47 percent of employer cost. So 47 percent of your employer claims cost are going to those three categories. Usually you see that number in the mid-30s. So you've got some very high dollars going to those three categories. Any questions about?
I just wanna go back to what you said, right from the get-go, where you said the data excludes any retirees that we have that are over 65. So I'm just curious, somebody retires at the age of, okay, let's say 60. We, they would be on that, this health plan until they, what, hit 65, and they go on Medic, Medicaid?
Correct, Medicare.
Medicare, I should say, I'm sorry. Medic, Medicare. Then, there's a supplement, I'm assuming, that, that we then pay, or they contribute to?
There is a supplement, and sometimes there's an NHRS, New Hampshire Retirement System subsidy that is paid towards that. Or they may have to pay the full cost of that, or maybe some combination of that. They do have pharmacy benefits through the Town of Goffstown's plan. So your retirees, I'm assuming Sue, are in 10, 20, 45, so they would have the same pharmacy benefit. And that's often where the costs come from, because Medicare is picking up as primary. There is some things that fall to major medical, but pharmacy costs 100 percent. There is some things that fall to major medical, but pharmacy costs a hundred percent are in these rate, uh, in the overall, not in this experience, but in your overall rating, they're included in there.
Okay, gotcha.
So you always want to remember them in your benefit ads. They're really important. Because you, you think, once they're retired, they're, you know, you don't have as much interaction, but it's really important to bring them back in for wellness and for, um, benefit ads each year.
The next piece is the sheet that refers to prescription drug claims. And this reporting does in fact have all of your actives, COBRA's, and retirees, because as Wendy said, all of your employees or your retired employees have the same exact prescription drug benefit, which is the RX ten, twenty, forty-five. A couple of years ago, some of you may remember that we did implement the programs where, um, you have the ability to fill your maintenance medications no more than three times before needing to begin using the mail order. And that has definitely made a, a great impact, because by far, the discounts are far greater when purchasing maintenance medications through the mail order. They can get a ninety-day supply of their medication for one copayment as opposed to a thirty-four day supply at the local pharmacy. So it really is cost savings all around.
Do you have any data comparing us to the norm on this?
We're actually working on that. We haven't had that up to date. We're hoping within the next four to five months that we're able to roll that out, um, because we've had a lot of requests for that. It wasn't something that groups were typically looking at. So we are working with Caremark, who is our pharmacy vendor, to put those norms together, not only for us, but for, um, other municipal state governments as well. So we kind of have a benchmark outside of New Hampshire.
Yeah, I mean, we're spending, the total cost with employee, with the employee contribution is almost over half a million. So I, I think it's something we do want to pay attention to.
Yeah, and this is an area that, as you move forward, working with your employees, to look for ways to make sure that you're spending, um, dollars in the best manner. There's a lot of room in pharmacy benefits to look at, um, promoting the use of generics. But also, physicians are visited every single day by what's called detailers. Brand name companies trying to get their prescriptions out. You never go home with a generic samples, you're always going home with the brand name samples. Um, so there's a lot of, um, programs that we're developing, clinical protocol, um, some step therapies. There's what's called a clinical bundle that can help reduce costs. So if you are looking at ways to, um, ideas of where you can better manage costs, this would be an area that I would recommend that you focus on moving forward. And we're actually developing a lot of programs that are, you can opt in at the local level, they're not mandatory, but can have, um, an impact on costs. Now, something that's important to remember, though, with pharmacy benefits, you really want people to be compliant with their medication, because you are going to save those excessive ER visits, especially if you take someone who is on asthma or a diabetic. You want them to be compliant. So the prescription drug copays that you have right now, the ten, twenty, forty-five, are doing exactly what we want to do in trying to shift people to generics when available. But you also don't want to raise those copayments so much that you see compliance go down. And right now, as an overall pool, we have great compliance. I haven't yet been able to break it down to a group-by-group basis. So that's something that you want to weigh. So spending that much on pharmacy may not be bad, but you want to make sure what's available is being spent appropriately. But you really do want people to stay compliant with their medications. And that's why we cover the test strips, syringes, you know, a lot of things that some other insurance don't.
Understanding your, uh, prescription claims, so there's close to eighteen hundred prescriptions are filled in a year by mail service?
Yes.
And then, uh, eighteen hundred by retail at a pharmacy?
Yep, and that, just to point that out, it's not, um, so if someone has, um, is on it for a year, and so they have four refills because they're using mail order, it would be counted as four in that number. So it's the number of refills that goes through.
E-refills. So, uh, so fifty percent of the refills and prescriptions are already mail service? And, uh,
Right.
So that's, at least it's good, it's fifty percent.
Yeah, based on daily supply, you're actually at about eighty-two percent, which is very good.
Right. Because there are certain medications that we, antibiotics, someone needs something right away, like a pain medication following a procedure, you don't want folks to wait for those types of things. It wouldn't make sense to mail those away. So like Wendy said, that eighty-one point three percent utilization on mail order is a fantastic percentage. And also, in looking at the total member cost, back to the fact that your employees are on a planned structure that does encourage a bit of consumerism, the employees are, I mean, it's certainly not a lot compared to the over half a million dollars, but the over forty thousand dollars is, in my experience, higher than what I see in, in a typical exhibit like this.
And so some of the top ten drugs that Debbie's listed on the sheet, you'll see, um, in the northeast, we do have a higher-than-average level of multiple sclerosis, and those drugs do tend to be, um, higher in cost. So you do have that in your, um, in the top ten for this group. Um, human growth hormones are also a specialty drug that has had, I, I think, about twenty, over twenty percent, um, cost growth year to year. Um, but they certainly are very effective for those individuals who need them. So as I talked about, some of those clinical programs, um, because many of the specialty drugs come with very high side effects, you really want to make sure that they're going to be effective for those individuals who need to be on them. So we do have, um, and you're part of, we have a specialty mail order pharmacy that deals with just specialty drugs. But specialty drugs are going to be something that, not only from us, but in the industry, you're going to hear more and more about. Um, biotech drugs that are coming out are going to be very expensive, and because they are usually single source, we have one or two generics now in specialty, and that's it. Um, the cost side of that is going to continue to grow. Um, within our population, overall Health Trust, we have a couple of very unique individuals who, um, their pharmacy costs exceed five hundred thousand dollars per year. They're life-saving drugs, those people absolutely need them, they're the right thing for them to be on, but there is a cost associated with that, and so that is part of the overall, um, pool experience that is impacting that sixty percent of the claims experience from the overall pool.
So you had provided us data that, in the past one, that top one percent of your claimants drive thirty-four percent of our planned costs, and I would assume that something is similar here. I mean, there's a, there's a small portion of, of participants who are driving the prescription cost as well.
Yes, yes, and those would generally be your specialty drugs, which many of the things we talked about tonight would be considered specialty drugs.
So here you have your dollar amounts on the top, then you have your top ten by cost, as Wendy was referencing with the number one and number three being the multi, multiple sclerosis medications. And if you see under net RXs, it says four, so that's likely one individual with four refills in a calendar year. And then underneath is the top ten prescription drugs by net prescriptions, or the, the number of prescriptions that are dispensed in a year. And with a number one at a hundred and two prescriptions being lisinopril, which is a generic to treat hypertension, which, again, to reiterate what Wendy said, is very important to keep people compliant with these types of medication. And with a generic like lisinopril, you'll see that the total member cost is an odd number, because it actually, most oftentimes, doesn't even cost the copayment when purchasing that prescription.
And the other exciting thing in pharmacy, if people can get excited about pharmacy, um, which we do, but, um, is all of the brand name drugs that are losing their patent. Um, so for example, Lipitor, which just came off patent. Health Trust is, um, expecting to send one million dollars less for the generic version of that as we move throughout the year. And that will be reflected in your claims experience next year. So our pharmacy trends are actually very low right now. Some of what we've been doing, going to different copayments and some clinical programs, but a lot of it, quite frankly, just from what's happening in the marketplace. And through the pipeline over the next eighteen months, there are other blockbuster drugs such as Nexium and others that will be coming off of patent as well. So that's going to help us all with costs, um, because doctors are writing the generic as soon as it happens. And we've had a great turnover rate where people are saying, yep, I'm going to move to the generic, save my copayment, and it saves us a lot of money. So those, those are some of the exciting things that are happening, hopefully to help offset that specialty drug cost.
But what's surprising, though, is when you look at the top ten prescription drugs, the net cost is, it's, it seems rather minimal. You know, I'm, I'm, I mean, you, as you go down here, I mean, the most expensive one with fifty-nine, uh, prescriptions was almost twenty-eight hundred dollars, whereas just, you know, four prescriptions for somebody with rheumatoid arthritis is forty-four thousand, it's just amazing, so.
That's a primary difference from generic to brand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's incredible.
It almost speaks for itself. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Carrie now to report on health and safety workshops and explain to you how active your employees actually are, which is a very, very, uh, it will tie into everything that we're going to talk about tonight.
Great, um, I did prepare, there's a stapled sheet that, um, the way that I'd like to approach this is, is kind of two-tiered, from the group perspective, and then talk about the slice of life and how your group is participating in those programs. So the top sheet, um, will show you just how active you actually have been for the past six, seven years. Um, it's titled "The Health and Safety Workshop Provided." What that basically means is that myself and Ron O'Keefe, who is the, um, risk side of the, um, of our team, come in and do programming for you all. So over the last six to seven years, we've come in, um, over fifty times. So fifty-one times we've been here to provide training, um, in different programs. Anything from, um, the slice of life overview, which we did with most of your employees this year, to back care programs, fitness, um, so those are more on the group side. So you've done a very good job in terms of being active. Um, we work with Linda Moody, um, who I believe probably runs your wellness, um, to see what your needs are. And we've been talking a lot about where we can move forward. Um, and on the group level, there is something that, um, you may want to consider, and that is what is one of our new programs, is the Health and Safety Coordinator. What that basically is, is, um, we're in our second year of the program, and we have fifty-eight, um, schools and municipalities that are currently involved in the program. And what that means is that they come to LGC for a training, and they basically learn how to be an onsite health and safety coordinator. So they're kind of the go-to person to get wellness and, and health and safety going for, um, for the town. With that comes, um, a stipend to be able to run programs, because very, very few times is wellness budgeted in terms of a dollar amount to, you know, to emphasize or to, um, kind of be the little, um, ticket for people to come and participate in the programs. So currently, the way our Health and Safety Coordinator program is structured is that groups get five hundred dollars a year that they then bring back to their community to run programs and incentivize employees to participate. So that is something that I would recommend that, um, for the next go-round, which will start in two thousand thirteen, um, that someone puts in to be in attendance, um, of that program. And that'll just take it kind of to the next step. I know Linda does a really good job with it, but that's only one of the many hats that she wears. So, um, it, it allows us to help, um, you know, to step in and take that next step with them. So you have been very active in terms of the group programming. Any questions on that? There is a combination of health and safety program, programming that you'll see, um, you know, so I think you're doing a good job as far as that's concerned. If you turn the page, what I'd like to talk about now, um, is our Slice of Life program, which is more of the individual program that's available for employees. Um, we did provide this little brochure here, this is just a mini snippet of, um, the program that employees can participate in for this year. So just to give you a brief overview, um, have you all heard of the Slice of Life program, I hope? Yes, some of you have. Okay, um, you've all read this, though, right? Um, the help, the Slice of Life program is our wellness program. It's our proactive approach to help your employees and any covered spouses, independents, get and stay healthy. Okay, so really, that's our, um, what are, our premises, that's what my job is, is to work with you all. We work with you on the individual and the group level. Um, our partner for the Slice of Life program is OnLife Health. They're out of, um, Tennessee, and they're a partner for what's called the health assessment. And I'm going to just explain the program, and then I'll let you know how you're doing in terms of numbers. Individuals that have health insurance through the town, as well as their, um, spouse, if they're covered under the program, have the opportunity to take the health assessment. It's a questionnaire that asks them questions about their health. And in return for completing the health assessment, they get a seventy-five dollar check as well as a wellness report. And, um, the wellness report would give them an indicator of how they're doing. And afterwards, I'll show you what the group graphics report looks like, which kind of pools them all together, similar to some of the information that Debbie gave you. Um, once somebody completes the health assessment, they have the opportunity to, to participate in health coaching programs. New this year, um, we have what's called a web portal. So everybody that completes their health assessment can go online, uh, work with a health coach, um, through OnLife, right via their own web portal. Whereas in past years, they've had to do it telephonic. So we're really trying to take a step into the, I guess, the technology age, um, and it's actually taken off very well. Another part of our program that's new this year is what's called our Biometrics Reward. Um, last year, when we looked at the folks who completed the health assessment, only twenty-five percent of that population actually did so with knowing their biometrics, meaning their blood pressure, their cholesterol levels, their BMI. Um, and to us, that was kind of, um, a, a big red flag that we need to make sure that people are understanding this. It's great for people to exercise, but we also want to make sure that they understand the numbers that affect their health. So this year, um, if individuals fill out their Biometrics Reward, they'll get a twenty-five dollar incentive for doing that. And then their numbers will automatically be transposed to their health assessment. So it's a great opportunity, um, and again, I'll get to the numbers in a few minutes. Once folks complete that, they have access to what's called the Health Awareness Program. Um, and the Health Awareness Program is up to three hundred dollars of money that comes back to the employees for participating in, um, physical activity programs and non-physical activity programs. You know, so it really gives them the opportunity to, uh, participate in, um, our self-reported physical activity program gives individuals the opportunity to, not necessarily go to a gym, but to do what they deem as physical activity for thirty days a week, uh, thirty days a week, thirty. That's a lot, that's what we all should be doing, but for, um, for them to participate, they have to, uh, fill out a calendar that they, um, then would turn in, and they get twenty-five dollars for participating. Um, but we can go through that, I just want to give you an overview of that, I don't want to get sidetracked by that. But what I would like to show you is how your group is doing on all of those things. So the second page, um, walks you through your numbers in the health assessment for the past four years. So this year currently, um, you have two hundred and twenty-nine eligible people to complete, and you're at about forty-seven percent, which compared to-
Employees plus spouses?
Yes, yep. Um, so this year, you're at forty-seven percent. And engaged means that they're currently participating in some form of health coaching. Okay, so if you compare that to last year, you had about fifty-six percent of your population completed the health assessment, um, and eight percent were, um, engaged in the program. They can do so now through the end of the year, so there is, you know, still time to, obviously, to get those numbers up to where they were in previous years. LGC as a whole, um, currently, right now, we're at forty-one percent of our population participating, and we're at about five percent that are participating in the health coaching. Okay, so overall, for us, we have about seventeen thousand of all of our members that have completed it. Um, so realistically, you're, you're right in the ballpark, um, you know, ways that we can get more employees is just through, um, advertising the program and reminding them that they can still complete it. I mean, we can certainly work with, um, Linda for that. On the bottom, what this does is summarizes all of the, um, the money essentially that's come back to your employees for participating in programs on their own through the Health Awareness Program. So in two thousand and eleven, um, a total of thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars was, um, returned to your employees or spouses, independents, for participating in programs. This year, you're up to eleven thousand six hundred and forty dollars. So again, that's money that goes back for reimbursement, um, for participating in programs. So employees are buying into what, um, the programs that we're offering.
So that's what you do?
That's what I do, yes.
Do any municipalities, um, how shall I say, sweeten the pot and offer their employees money to participate in this?
We do.
Okay.
Five dollars a week.
Five, okay.
Yep, there are some groups, um, in the past that I have worked with. Um, one that comes to my mind that I've done a lot of work with is the town of Guilford. They, in the past, um, have actually matched what LGC, um, offers to their employees. So there are certain groups that are doing that. Um, I mentioned the Health and Safety Coordinator Academy. What we're looking to do moving forward with that is have town-to-town challenges or district-to-district challenges for walking and for different, uh, programs that will hopefully bring another additional kickback that towns can use if they participate and potentially win, you know, whatever the challenge is. So we're trying to think outside the box to move everybody forward in terms of on the group level. But things like a five hundred dollar, uh, five hundred dollars may not seem like a lot, but to incentivize people to participate in a program at work really does go a long way.
And also, um, the other one that you may want to consider, um, contacting is Rockingham County. They have been doing a lot, not only with incentives on wellness, but how, um, wellness is interacting with their health plan. And they've done a lot of creative things in the past year with biometric screenings and things like that. So they would be a good one. And I know Martha Roy is the Human Resource Director there, and she loves to talk about the program, and I think would be a wealth of information for you.
They're a Health and Safety Coordinator side as well, so they work with us at that level as well. Um, and then, on the backside, if you want to flip over, um, what this is, is, this is what's called the, the group graphics report from OnLife Health, and this gives a snapshot of all those folks that have completed the health assessment, what their overall health status is. So what I would then do is look at this, come in and look at what your population may need in terms of programming. So you have to remember, this is-
Self-reported, right?
Yes, so currently, right now, this is-
All right, because I'm looking at a few of these, I'm like, four percent use alcohol?
Let me, let me explain what it actually means.
Have high cholesterol, five percent.
This is, this is based on- This is, this is based on the population that I told you. So currently, the 47%, so the 107 people that have completed their health assessment, this is based on the answers that they gave. Some may have completed the biometrics, so hopefully with the biometrics incentive, we're going to get more actual data. But you're right, it is their-
You have to hit the target of 25% there.
There, well, and that's a target you probably don't want to reach.
I'm sorry.
You're reading this backwards.
Oh, no, I'm just kidding.
I know you are. Real quick-
And this is only those employees who are insured with-
This is only those that have completed the health assessment. So it's only a small populations-
Small subset of your group.
Right, so the larger percentage that you have that complete the health assessment, the more of a clear picture you're going to get in terms of the overall health status of your population, based on their answers. And the reason, again, we put in the biometrics is so that we could actual, we could actually have real numbers in terms of blood pressure, cholesterol-
Got you.
-in the drivers for risk factors. So the first, the first box, which says demographics, just gives you, paints you a picture, and this is 2011. So this is based on last year because we're not able to get the group graphics report yet for this year. Box two really gives you an indicator of what that group looks like. So low risk would be 51% of the people who completed it would be considered to hopefully live a healthy, long life based on their answers. The moderate risk would benefit from participating in a health management or health coaching program, and then the high risk are that percent of your population who have the highest risk for early, early disease or death based on their risk factors.
And our programs really aren't designed to move the high risk to moderate or the moderate to low risk. Much of what you want to do is keep that low-risk population low. That's often a discussion that happens when they say, "Well, we're just incentivizing those who are already healthy," and you need to do that because you don't want them to move up through the scale. You do have a lower age population here, but you most, more than likely will have many of them through retirement, or you may have individuals coming from other communities. But we do, within our population, really keep people from the beginning of their careers through retirement. So that investment in keeping them in that low risk is really important.
So the next box would list the top three risk factors for this population, and those would be smoking, lack of exercise, and HDL level, which is your good cholesterol, meaning that they indicated a lower level of HDL. And again, this is just that group graphics report. The, the part that we were having fun with earlier, which is the next part, what this does is breaks down all the different categories that are discussed or asked in the health assessment, so from exercise to alcohol, all the way down to wearing your seatbelt and your preventative screenings like mammograms and pap smears. It talks about how your group did compared to the US average and to healthy people, which is the government, the government healthy people program. And realistically, this population did better than the healthy people in all except two categories, which the bottom two are, which was overweight, meaning that the BMI was higher than potentially 30, which is considered obese, and then seatbelt use. So those were the two areas that, of the group that we looked at, that participated that came up below average. And then the bottom just shows you, it asks people that have maybe those higher risks if they're potentially thinking of change over the next, you know, six months to a year. Any questions on that? That just kind of gives you a group snapshot. So the higher participation you can have in that program is going to give you a more clear snapshot of, of what the participant and what the risk factors are.
So for the viewers watching, the overweight and seatbelts, we're only 1% off the average.
Yes, you are. I didn't mention the eight categories that you were better than, so.
Don't, let's not get hung up on those.
You lose weight, you can, you can put the seatbelt on.
A couple of other programs that I wanted to mention is Anthem 360 program, which is an Anthem program. Obviously Anthem is our partner, and we have our own wellness program, so we only participate in some of the programs that Anthem has to offer. And one of them is the nurse line. And we think it's really important that people understand that they do have access to 24/7 nurse line, and I think it's probably one of the most underutilized programs that we have. So we can get magnets and things out so that you can, again, promote that. And what that's going to do is be that first step. I mean, we all have WebMD in the computer that everybody can go to, but in the middle of the night, sometimes it's nice to be able to pick up the phone and actually speak to somebody and talk to them. And they may say, "Go to the ER immediately," or they may be able to talk with you and give you some alternatives to wait till the next morning to talk to your doctor. So again, that's all part of consumerism and learning how to best utilize all the benefits that you do have.
And we, again, that is a program that is really great for new moms and others that are recently diagnosed with an illness, because that's generally when, if something's going to go wrong, it does, and that can avoid those ER costs. The average ER cost is somewhere between $800 and $1,400, really, to walk through the door and get a general screening. So the more of those that we can avoid giving good information, certainly times where it's appropriate and people need to get there, and we're not looking to discourage that, but really looking for, if you, you know, you just want to ask someone a question, having a registered nurse on the other end of the phone is very positive.
And one of the things that we're talking about in terms of prevention, there's a workshop, and I was just looking to see, it doesn't look like we've done it here in several years if ever, it's called Understanding Your Health. And what that really does is it educates employees how to use the benefits that they have to the best of their ability. So it goes through things like how much it costs to go to the, the emergency room as opposed to maybe an urgent care center or their doctor. So it's really based on how to become a consumer. I mean, we all, if we're looking to buy a car, we shop around and we do our research, but most of us don't do that with our health insurance, and that's really what that workshop targets. So it certainly is a good one that is definitely recommended.
Is that a, a video presentation?
No, that's me coming and talking to you.
You live.
It's me live. Yeah, it is, it's one of the programs that we offer. And it is a good one because it does review all of your benefits and how to utilize them to the, to the best of their capacity. And the final thing I will mention is Life Resources, which is our member assistance program. You have, as a group, participated with, with them, they've come out and done some trainings with you. They are our partner, they are a typical member assistance program, so employees can use them for, you know, calling and the traditional resources for if they're having a bad day or they have something that they want to talk to, you know, with a counselor about. We also have a benefit that goes along with that for, if you have a legal or a tax question, you get 25% off if you work with the person that is referred to. It's one of our most underutilized programs that we have available, and I know Linda actually called me last week to ask if we could get data on who, how many people from the town are using it. And at this point, we can't, just because if somebody calls up for counseling, they don't have to leave their name, they just have to be able to talk with someone, whereas we can give you data on how often they've come out, which is actually indicated on here, because they also offer trainings that they can come out and do, like workplace harassment. I know we've done some training, resiliency training with the police department and things like that. But that is also a program that we encourage folks to utilize as well.
Scott, I have a question. Scott? Just calling for Debbie or Wendy, but this whole thing about emergency rooms and do we have any data on that in terms of, would we be able to know whether we have an issue with-
Emergency rooms, yep, we can take a look at that.
Can I say that, because now you see more of these urgent care facilities popping up all over the place, and if we can educate, you know, our employees, say, "Listen, if you have something, you know, use your, use your judgment," but there are urgent care facilities that are far less cost.
And that's exactly what that Understanding Your Health workshop does, is it really walks you through the cost for each of them. And it doesn't discourage people. I mean, if you need to go to the ER, like you said, go to the ER, but there are times where there is that intermediate ground that is, is more cost-effective.
And just know that as part of Health Trust, it doesn't affect Goffstown individually, but as part of Health Trust, we have been supporting the Medical Home Pilot through the New Hampshire Citizens Health Initiative, and that really is an ideal, because what it does is it, part of being a medical home is having a full complement of services within the primary care physician's office and within that setting, but also having longer hours so that there are Saturday coverage, Sunday coverage, and evenings to keep them completely out of the ER and the urgent care center, and having them see their doctor that knows them best. So that's another thing that globally we're supporting, and I just wanted to make sure you knew we were doing that.
Just to check back on the cost and utilization summary it does bring up, the emergency room usage on your outpatient claims. You're currently 1% higher than the January pool norm that you have dropped from your prior year. And the other thing, along with Carrie's presentation, the way your medical plans are structured, if it does, if someone can visit an urgent care facility and avoid the emergency room, and it's a healthy alternative for them to do so, your plan design is designed so that the consumer is going to pay half. Their copayment is half if they visit an urgent care facility. So between using that nurse line, does it make sense, would it make sense for me to go to the urgent care facility? In Carrie's presentation, there are a lot of tools to keep people informed about that option, because here in Goffstown, anyone in Southern New Hampshire, we have so many resources for urgent care that we should take advantage of it if we can.
So Sue, I just want to do a time check, because we've been presenting for about an hour. I think one of the other things you had asked us about was benefit options, which Debbie had put in a sheet. I don't know if you want us to go through those, or it was just information that you wanted to have.
I think this-
Up to the board.
I think somehow it has to come out publicly, I mean, I think this is, part of this is the education for our community, whether you're here or we talk about it, but-
No, we're happy to go through it, I just wanted to make sure we were not taking more time than you wanted us to.
Time's fine.
Okay. So let's switch to the right-hand side, and I am going to present off the Town of Goffstown Benefit Options Excel spreadsheet. And I did write some statistics on here that will help, again, you compare the town to our, our overall membership as well. And looking at this option, you'll see the medical plan code along the top. There are two that apply to you, and those are asterisks, those are your current plan designs, and the others are plan alternatives. You have, you're currently offering a Blue Choice three-tier plan with a $20 office visit copayment, as well as a Matthew Thornton Blue HMO plan with a $20 office visit copayment, and both of them have a prescription drug plan of what we call RX 102045. That means that if someone visits the local pharmacy for something that they're starting right away, or they need an antibiotic, they'd pay $10, $20, or $45, depending on which category it falls into, as well as they'd pay the $10, $20, or $45 for the entire 90-day supply.
And just to point out, the 10 is if it's generic, so we're really incentivizing that with the lower copayment. And then brand names are broken into two categories. One is a preferred brand name, where we get deeper discounts for those medications, and then a non-preferred brand product. Generally speaking, anything that falls in the non-preferred, there would be a therapeutic alternative within tier two. That doesn't mean it's equivalent, but it is an option that they can talk about with their physician.
And all of the backup material is on the right-hand side of your folders. You'll see your, the medical plan code, then immediately underneath the prescription plan code. Everything but the plan, all the way to the right, is priced the same or is designed or aligned the same on your rate sheet. You have single, two-person, and family monthly rates for medical plans that are linked to the 102045 prescription drug program that you currently have. And then you'll also see another dark black box that says prescription plan code, and this is our newest prescription plan design, and this splits out retail and mail. And you'll see the single, two-person, and family rates for all of those medical plans if you were to switch the prescription drug component. For the R102540, M104070, that means that for R, retail prescriptions or short-term medications, up to a 34-day supply at your local pharmacy, it's a $10 copayment if it's generic, a $25 copayment if it is a preferred brand name, and a $40 copayment if it's a non-preferred brand name medication. M or mail order, when you're purchasing a 90-day supply through the mail order medicat, I'm sorry, the mail order pharmacy, it would be a $10 copayment if it's a generic medication, a $40 copayment if it's a preferred brand name, and $70 if it's a non-preferred brand name medication.
And again, it's a difference between getting a 34-day supply locally and a 90-day supplied mail, so that's part of the difference.
But still really incentivizing and encouraging folks to take the generic medications when it makes sense to do so for their medical needs. Then you have your office visit copay, your ER copay, urgent care, et cetera, for, et cetera, for each plan design. You have a $20 office visit copayment on both of your medical plans, and what I wanted to share with you folks is that currently of all of our members, both January and July members, we still have about 39% of our members on $5 office visit copay plans. So again, just to say, you're doing a great job by having moved your, your membership with your employees to the $20 office visit copayment. And I know it was over a period of time, and now we're all, you're all finally there on the same level. And then we have 54% of our members that are still utilizing our $1 mail order benefit. So every renewal, every conversation we have, we are certainly trying to educate and inform our members how it really is beneficial to increase those amounts, and slowly but surely we are getting there, as you can see what the Town of Hookset is changing as of today, or effective August 1st, that one plan they're going to get rid of.
And I also think that that 54% is going to change dramatically after our renewal July 1. Staff has done, been very busy with our July groups, which mainly are schools and some larger municipalities that are on a July cycle, and they have made significant changes both in pharmacy and in plan design. So after we get through the renewal, usually by the time we get all the employee paperwork in from the groups, it's usually about August before we can actually take a snapshot of what happened, but we can then share with you some updated statistics from that.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. I should have mentioned that, these are as of April 1st or March 31st, the first quarter of the year. So groups are constantly looking at options and alternatives, and how can they save money and still offer very comprehensive benefit packages to their employees. When you see the codes IPDED, you can have a Blue Choice plan, you can have a Matthew Thornton plan with a deductible on certain services, and that's where the IPDED code comes into play. Again, additional movement to those types of plan designs each and every open enrollment.
And basically, what that means is inpatient deductible, so if you're hospitalized, you would have that deductible. So in addition, if you were, for example, using the ER, you have the ER copayment, but if you had a scheduled admission, you would then have a deductible that would be associated with that stay.
Yep, traditionally, the plans with the IPDED code, other than inpatient services, it's your high-end radiologies, ambulance, hospice, things of that nature.
And one of the things about the flow charts that Debbie included in the packets, if you open them up, they're all set up the same way, so you literally can lay them beside each other to see the actual differences by each of the plans. So if you are looking at alternative plan designs, this certainly gives you a summary, but a more detailed summary is the, what we call cost shares tables or flow charts that are included in your packet.
So none, none of these three IPDEs are eligible for HSAs because they don't meet the minimum requirements, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Typically, the last few meetings, our packets have been scanned in, and people who are watching on television can see. So for the benefit of the people who may be watching on tele-
They have that option tonight.
They, they have this?
Yes.
Oh, it is scanned in?
Debbie said it was all of them.
Okay. Because I think, you know, the one thing, you know, as, I guess, as people who have to decide policy, is that when you look at this, and, you know, let's just use the Blue Cross three-tier plan, which we offer, for a single person, it's $684.62 a month, total cost. Two-person is $1,369.24 a month, and then the family is $1,848.48. So, you know, roughly, we're talking probably somewhere in the 22, on the family plan, 22-ish, I'm thinking, I haven't, I don't have a calculator. So when we talk about, going back to this sheet, and if we talk about a 10% increase, you know, just for those who might be watching, we're talking about the potential of a total cost increase of $2,200 in one given year, of which, based upon the way our plans are set up, we contribute 90% of that majority, and the employee contributes 10. So when the rates go up 10%, the Town of Goffstown has to pay 10, we're paying $2,000 on the family plan, the employee is paying another $200 on that. And when we, when we look over the years and you see a 6%, so over the last, you know, three years, you know, you're, you know, you're looking at a 30% increase. So over that period of time, you know, we may have realized the town, for each person that's on a family plan, it would have gone up, you know, $5,000 that we are now contributing. And I think that's where, as a policymaker, I'm looking at saying, "Okay, is that sustainable for us, or do we need a greater caution?" And that's something that you don't have to be worried about, but certainly we do, simply because these numbers are escalating at a, you know, this is far more than, than some of the other things. I just wanted that to come out, because we haven't really talked about some of these numbers.
Yes, yeah, but one thing you have to remember in that, it's one thing to say that we have to do that and you don't. They are us, because they represent us and other communities that are on these sheets for health insurance. So they do have to listen to that, because they're also sensitive to that, because they're members who they represent in this pool for insurance are made- who they represent in this pool for insurance are made up by us, just so that everybody's aware of that.
The other thing, what impact, when you, when you showed us this page, you have a certain town here, you're looking at, you know, they must have very high costs because with no deductibles or $1, I mean, their cost, I mean, they're paying a high freight, no, no doubt, but their cost is going to be huge too because, and then how does that skew the overall?
There's about 5% difference between having a mail order one and a 102045 on average. Because really, when you look at the cost of generics, a dollar actually is quite a bit of the cost of a generic because, you know, sometimes you go to the pharmacy and because if our, if your generic medication costs lower than your copayment, you actually pay the lower amount. So I know I've gotten some regular old antibiotics recently and I've walked away from the pharmacy paying $2.25 or, you know, $3. Where it makes the difference is specialty drugs and brand-name drugs, so that shift to generics is important. But I'd like to go back to your overall comment about the answer, the easy answer is to say it's cost share and we have to shift the cost to the employees. That's really not the, the way that you're going to mitigate future claims experience. And it's very hard because I know you have budget restraints and you're looking at total compensation for your employees, not only wages but benefits. And that's where the stuff that Carrie is talking about makes the difference. So I would hope as a group and that as we're moving forward, we can't just keep shifting costs between who's going to pay what piece of the pie. We've got to try to make that pie smaller. And I think that's why groups like Rockingham County and Guilford have seen lower average overall increases because of their commitment to that. Health Trust and as Phil said, we are the members, we're made up of the members. And that's why there was a huge commitment to wellness in the early 90s. And right now, we contribute to our wellness programs, about $5 million a year it costs us to run our plans. Three-quarters of that, so over 3 million of that is directly given back to employees in incentives. So it's that $75 for filling out your health risk assessment. It's the $300 that you have available for filling out the questionnaire because we need people to participate. Because on our website, and I didn't bring copies tonight, we can certainly get to Sue, but on the website is a public hearing presentation and it may not be on the website, I'll have to look, but we have public hearings that we're required to hold each year as we're setting rates. Part of that public hearing presentation is a pie that shows what part of our claims experience in our rate is going towards actual cost of claims, what is our admin fee, what is Anthem's admin fee, what is our risk fee, so our reserves, and then what is going towards wellness, and those percentages are on there. On average, you'll see if you were with a commercial carrier, that the admin cost would be in excess of 15%. Not only for us, but other public sector risk pools in New Hampshire, you will see that we are under 10% for administrative costs. And if you took out wellness, we're actually closer to 7%. And that's that firm belief, whether it's us or the other public sector risk pools, that wellness is what's going to make the difference. And you all pooling together and going back to that conversation we started with about an hour ago, where how can you leverage the resources of the school, that is another way to affect that big piece of the pie. So you can, you know, shift the costs and, you know, is it, employees are contributing 5%, 10%, but if you don't change that fundamental discussion at some point at the local level to focus on wellness, we're never going to really have, make an impact on that. And even if you don't even pursue the combination with the school district and the surrounding towns, there's no reason why you can't partner up with wellness and education because they're all members. So you could start that now if you wanted to. So do not, I want to highlight the plans in the last two columns because these are the newest plans that we have available, the newest plan designs, and you'll see, the way I've set them up on this graph is from left to right, most costly to least costly, with the exception of the last plan because it's so unique, you have to kind of put it off on, by itself. But the last, the second to the last plan, you'll see SOS in the medical plan code. That stands for site of service. What that means is that for ambulatory surgical centers, outpatient procedures that are done at ambulatory surgical centers as well as labs, these plans have a deductible, you'll see of $1,000 per person or $3,000 for a family. Everything other than office visits are subject to, or anything other than an office visit is going to apply towards that deductible. With the exception of outpatient procedures and lab. If you use the preferred sites of service on that plan design, labs will be zero and your outpatient procedures will cost $75 and your deductible would not apply. So a very unique plan design where it's steering you towards high-quality, lower-cost facilities to help really target the claims overall.
Like a preferred provider network or something similar to that?
Exactly. You would have, you would have a list of preferred labs where it may take some consumerism for the patient to say, "Doc, do you have this lab in, in your building?" Yes, no, if not, they may have to take their lab orders and physically go to a different lab facility. And fortunately, in the southern part of New Hampshire, I feel like I say this a lot, they really are everywhere and they're in the most nondescript places that you'd ever think of in a little strip mall and that's all they do is draw labs.
I will say that these new plan designs, Anthem has moved a bulk of their fully insured small group business to these plans. It has been controversial. Providers are not happy. Hospitals own the labs and we are sending to independent labs. So there are two independent labs in the state where for this plan design, that's where you would need to go. And for some of the ambulatory surgical stuff, they do need to get a referral outside of where the physician may normally refer you. So I don't want you to look at this plan design and say, oh, that would be easy. These are not easy plan changes. They take a lot of communication. The providers are getting used to them very quickly because of the amount of business through Anthem that has been moved to them, but they're not without some of the growing pains of any new product. So the other thing with these, we are seeing that groups are saying, okay, I'm going to take this, but we're going to fund half or more of the deductible as the town in order to encourage individuals to go there. That's not what they were designed to do. They don't change enough behavior if you do that. So we have had to institute some policies with this that you cannot fund more than 50% of the deductible. And if you fund between 25 and 50%, these rates are actually increased significantly because you're not changing behavior. This is really for those individuals who want to maybe have an FSA account or other account that they have. So this is something that although we are seeing some movement within the public sector, it's slow and I think there's some caution that needs to be put with that as we see how the marketplace responds to these plans.
Because it does move you from your typical facility that you have with your regular doctor's office practice and their preferred facilities to potentially other facilities.
Which sometimes they own, they have an ownership stake in.
You're correct.
Yeah, because I mean, a lot of these orthopedists or they're then affiliated with the outpatient, you know, surgical place. They own a, a share of that and then all of a sudden, that's what they do, their, their surgeries. So they're all keeping it.
Yeah, there's less and less independent practitioners, so they're hospital-based systems, so this is hoping to change some of those cost discussions.
Phil, question?
Just a follow-up on your comments about that. Some of those plans are more prone or beneficial to either single or two-person. But when you get into the family, I mean, anybody that has a child that's going to the doctor and all of a sudden, for some reason or other, they need a throat culture or something. You're here at the doctor's office for the throat culture. Oh, by the way, I can't have you do the throat culture. I have to go to this other lab that's across town to have them do the lab and then you have to get the results from that.
Yeah, and it's not all lab work, but you're right.
But that's, where you run into the issue is if it's a, a two-person, where it's different, you're not dealing with a child with that condition that you could do that. I mean, let's face it, to put somebody through that and say, I mean, I wouldn't want to be sitting here and then have people complaining to me that that's what we're putting them through. So people need to be aware of, of that issue.
Yeah, and many times that's why we're seeing that when a group does add this plan, it's an option. So you may keep the benefit you have today, this is an option, and there may be some sharing of the premium savings with the employee based on that. So there's lots of things you can do with contribution strategies, but we are not seeing in the public sector yet this plan as a total replacement very much.
Right, but I just wanted to bring that point out because a lot of people look at it and say, well, the doctors don't like it because they own the lab or they do this. A lot of times they don't own, own the lab and to say that I have to go on the other side of town because that's the lab that I have to go to get this price, but otherwise I have to pay extra to have you do it.
Yeah, so a combination thereof. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, absolutely. Debbie, you noted the plans listed here and we're most expensive starting to the left. But I just want to point out to everyone that they offer many other plans that are more expensive than this.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, they started with our highest price plan on this spreadsheet.
You have the JY and the-
Right. So you're not seeing the prices of higher-priced ones.
Right, we have a Blue Choice two-tier with a $5, $10, $15. There's lots on the other side of the scale.
Good point, and I typically go under that assumption that you don't want to start way up with the JY, but yes, good point. We would have maybe another page or two to the left. But in, in talking about the site of service as a plan design option, we're always trying to meet the needs of our members and budgets are always an issue, so we're always trying to come up with still comprehensive medical plans that are lower cost. And this is just our next step of here's a new lower-cost option. If you look at the, the cost for those plans, they are, they are quite a bit less. But like Wendy said, they're an option. They're an option for discussion into the future and there certainly could be in addition to what you currently have. So we like to have choices that whatever budget needs or budget crises you find yourself in, there certainly still be a very comprehensive Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield benefit in your reach.
And then the final plan design is more what you talked about where, what I think you would see in the private sector, which is the Luminos plan.
Right. This is a traditional health savings account qualified, high-deductible health plan. It's through Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's a very unique plan design. You have to kind of forget everything that you know about managed care in a sense, as well as, it doesn't have a separate prescription drug card, which is why you don't see those separate codes in that column. Because prescription drugs, office visits, chiropractic visits, outpatient surgeries, inpatients days, hospice, everything under that Luminos plan is going to be subject to a calendar-year deductible of $2,500 for a single-person plan or $5,000 for a two-person or a family plan. There is a network of providers that is even larger than the JY network, so it is a large network. There's no PCP selection, so no one selects a primary care provider. There are no referrals to obtain. They go wherever they want, whatever they want. But there is that deductible to pay on all of their medically necessary healthcare coverage, one exception. Routine preventive care is all paid for in full as long as someone is obtaining that within the Luminos network. So that's something that's very advantageous. We have all of our plan designs set up exactly that way. Someone stays in the network, they have a routine physical exam, and it's paid for in full. With a Luminos plan, if they continue to access their care through a Luminos network, or within the Luminos network rather, that calendar-year deductible becomes their out-of-pocket maximum, meaning everything else is going to be paid for in full after those calendar-year deductibles. If they don't and they see a non-Luminos provider, they would then share on the cost at 70/30. They would pay 30%, the plan pays 70% until the total out-of, out-of-pocket maximum would, would reach $5,000 for a single-person plan or $10,000 for a two-person or a family plan.
I think between HSAs and FSAs, et cetera, but in this plan here, would the, would the employer be allowed to contribute to assist the employee with their deductible?
Absolutely. Everything I just summarized is the core medical plan itself. What you have the ability to do with this plan design structure is between an employee and an employer or a combination of the two, you, the employee could set up a health savings account and put aside money pre-tax or pre-tax advantage into this account to help pay that deductible.
The carryover, I mean, sometimes you'll have to carry over. Sometimes you'll lose it if you use it if you don't use it.
You carry it over.
This is a, this is a carryover. It absolutely is. So this is-
Right, okay.
Yeah, HSA is a carryover.
This is different. What the IRS says right now is that in calendar year 2012, they are currently adjusting these amounts every year for inflation. So for 2012, the IRS says that in a combination of employee, employer, they can't put more than $3,100 if they're a single or $6,250 if they're a two-person or family. So they tell you what you can put in, in a calendar year, but what you don't use at the end of a calendar year will roll over year after year after year and they currently don't have a threshold. They don't have a ceiling to say this is how high, is too high. It can grow to whatever level the individual can get that to reach. And the other benefit too is what we find from certain financial institutions is that if someone does get a balance in their health savings account to a certain level, they have the ability to withdraw funds and invest at a more aggressive rate. So it is a traditional savings account where even as a regular health savings account, they have $1,000, $2,000. It does incur interest, not a lot of interest, but very similar to a traditional savings account.
It can't be used though to pay for health insurance premiums after you retire, correct?
Only if you're 65 or older, it is eligible for Medicare.
Medicare only.
It is.
Now, do you have any other deductible, high deductible plans or is that it? $2,500, $5,000? I mean, IRS allows $1,200 for single, $2,400 for family to be considered for HSA purposes.
We don't at this time.
You don't.
But I think this plan, which I think is unique, is that once you hit that calendar-year deductible, you don't, you're not paying any cop, you know, the, not copayments. Copayments, you know, what's 8020 or 9010, I mean, that's pretty good.
If you stay in network.
If you stay in network. Do you happen to have a calculator? Does LGC have some sort of a calculator where an individual, if they're choosing, can say, okay, I know that I have, I'm on this drug, which typically costs me $20 a month or I do the mail order. Then I know that I go to the doctor X amount of times. Because I happen to have that on, and, and with my employer and you can kind of calculate which plan net, on average, what your health, what your, what your, what your health needs are. You can kind of, you know, pick the one that's most advantageous to you. Do you have anything like that?
We don't on the medical side. Pharmacy, you can go into the care mark site and price your drugs to see not only what your copayment would be, but what the actual cost of the drug is because here you don't have prescription drug copays. It would be the entire cost of the medication, so we have that tool available.
You know where I'm driving at because I think if you have it-
We do, and the product is just, we have less than 100 people on this currently, so I, I think we will be-
But this is upon this one, but when, if you were, if you had a, an, a family or a two-person where maybe the husband is on two drugs and the wife is on one drug and each one costs, you know, listen, they're not, maybe they're doing mail order and it's like $500 or $600 out of their pocket for their drugs. And they know, they know they go to the doctor a few amount of times and now you have to add up the 20-dollar copays. And then you look at the premium savings on the monthly premium and you're like, whoa, this is, it's actually less expensive for me to be on the high-deductible plan because, you know, whether or not your employer is or isn't contributing to it, so.
And employee, we don't and we will probably be developing those things, but also your local contribution strategy will play into that.
Right, but I think a lot of times that's the educational component because when people hear high-deductible plans, they're like, oh my God, this is the worst thing ever. I can't believe that, that I have to pay a $2,500 deductible. But if there's, if the employer contributes to a certain degree and then you, you do the math and you say, wait a second, I'm not paying any, it's, it's going to go towards my office copays, it's going to any ER copay, it's going towards my prescription drugs. It does, it may make sense to them.
Nope, you're right.
Yeah.
So those communities that offer the Luminos is an option?
It's an option, yes. We don't have any full replacement plans as of yet that are on the list. We have two.
Do you do?
We have one group that's about 50 and a newer group that's a bit over 100.
Very aggressive. Yes, Phil, your question?
I know they used to have it on, on the HSA and I assume it's still the same way. Though depending on the age that you sign up for the HSA, you're allowed more if you're older. I don't know if they still have it. In other words, if you sign up for, if you got involved in HSA at 30 years old, you know, you say, you mentioned the $3,100, but if you were older, let's say you were 50 or 55 and you got into an HSA, sometimes they allow you to put a higher amount in to try to catch up onto the savings.
That's only if you're 55 or older. The IRS allows you, I believe, an additional $1,000 a calendar year.
You're in, Phil.
Yeah.
You're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's an IRS provision.
Right. I, the reason why I was saying that is because
Who are you looking on that?
When, when you are initially looking at that, people should be aware of that, that you could put a higher amount in. And there is definitely a tax advantage to it because it's taken right off the top.
Right.
When you, in other words, for, for people- When you, in other words, for people, make it simple, it's taken off right on the first page of your form, of your long form, right up there before you get to the second page.
That's an ability to grow money in a tax. The other benefit of a health savings account is not only can you use it to pay your deductible, but the IRS says you can also treat it similarly to a flexible spending account. There are other qualified or eligible expenses that you can spend it on.
You can use it for dental.
Dental, vision, acupuncture.
Right.
On page eight in your booklet, it highlights all of the things that the IRS says it's A-OK to use those monies. We always caution someone if they're newer to the plan to, maybe you want to wait till you have a bit of a balance in your HSA before using it for dental and vision. So if you did get to a point where you didn't have a fully funded HSA and you needed, you were going to hit your deductible for procedure, et cetera. So we always kind of caution people in the early stages of their enrollment with a plan like that.
There's an annual cap on the contributions you can make to an HSA, but is there a total cap? Can it never exceed a certain amount?
Good question.
The guy at Russ hasn't said that there is one yet. Knock on wood. Not yet. Well, yeah.
No, you're right. If you did, if you were a young family,
Right.
that might, if you were able to say, go to, say, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand in it over the period of time, that would pay orthodontics. That could do a lot of things that typically happen when your kids are older.
Yeah, and there was one other tax advantage at that too, because you're also, when you're doing your taxes, what you pay into it is a deductible. And what you still expend out of it is still calculated in as far.
I don't believe that's the case. I believe that's considered double dipping.
No, no, no. What I'm saying, because it's viewed as two different functions. In other words, your premium, what you're paying into is a premium, and that's taken off the top. But you still, you still itemize all your expenses.
I would want to look at that for sure.
It's.
I would want to look. The IRS, I don't know why they've.
Unless they change things.
They, I like. Publication nine sixty-nine is typically my primary resource for HSA, HRA, FSA, any kind of tax advantage account for these types of expenditures. They have lots of rules. I would hate to break that.
When they first came out, they were designed for self-employed people.
Yeah.
So being self-employed people, that may have been.
That may have been different. So we'll take a look at that.
Right, right, okay.
So going back to you saying about the tax advantages, under the current plans right now, if someone were to go to the ER, they had a few office visits and they had, you know, let's just say they racked up five hundred or up to a thousand dollars of out-of-pocket expenses due to the current plan that they have, those would be after-tax dollars.
Unless they have an FSA.
Unless they have an FSA.
Right.
Right. Now with this, with a high deductible plan, the HSA would allow all of, they could use, that would be pre-tax dollars. So there'll be technically pre-tax dollars that would be paying for anything that they had or that was, okay.
Rick had a question out there.
Yes, Rick.
I'm just curious, on the Luminos package, what is the monthly out-of-pocket to the employer, employee? What would they have to pay? Like, right now, we're paying, we pay ten percent. So would we still pay ten percent of that thirteen thirty?
Unless the board had made a policy change, yes.
Right, so then, so you pay that ten percent plus, you'd have to spend out of your own pocket up to twenty-five hundred dollars.
For a single.
For a single and five thousand for a family.
Unless it's subsequent years where you've not used money that you've put in and you can accumulate a balance to cover that.
Thank you.
Another question in the back?
Other question on the Luminos, with the, for family. I've been a paramedic for twenty-two years, and unfortunately, I get to see what happens to sick people. And in this particular case, if you have a family plan with a five thousand deductible, that could come to reality to that family in one night. And that would have to be due in the next thirty days. And I'm not sure versus a plan where that could be, could be translated over a twelve-month period in a, in a monthly rate. I think that's been more palatable to a lot of people versus if, you know, that could wipe out somebody's savings or could put somebody worse, I assume. So that's, that's the plus and minus. I see the reality on the streets versus on paper seeing, seeing numbers. So that's something.
And that's, that's the difference between an FSA and an HSA, because when you commit to an FSA, that money is available day one, even though you haven't contributed yet.
Right.
But on an HSA, he's right, you can only take out what you've put in.
Right. However, between the first question about contribution toward the Luminos plan and then on the second piece about what would potentially be employee and/or employer contribution into the HSA, that is certainly up for discussion. That's something that local government center would kind of step back from and allow the town to discuss that. But in your scenario about if on day one and you experience that five thousand dollar or then some claim, the IRS does allow you, as deposits are made into your health savings account, you do, you are allowed to pay yourself back. If you've had a claim and then the pre-tax monies go into your HSA, the IRS says you can pay yourself back. But that's a big. Yeah, it's a, it's definitely a big issue, but it's allowed.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, just, I guess, address that point is that I happen to have a high deductible plan. My, my wife had a surgery. It was pretty expensive, and I had to lay out a couple of thousand dollars. I didn't get the medical bill. I don't think they started rolling in till like forty-five days after the surgery, believe it or not. And then, you know, you know, the due dates, they were, they even called me saying, you have a high deductible plan. If you need to make arrangements to go monthly, let us know. So I, I just, I don't think it's a situation where you have to be, it's going to be five thousand dollars within thirty days or really going to call collection agencies. I think that, I think the hospitals do understand. I'm not saying that they, they want their money. There's no doubt about it. But I think there is an understanding that if you're paying a monthly, monthly towards it. And I, and I think that it is a policy decision for both companies and boards to try to make it so that it's palatable and the risks aren't all placed upon the employee, that, you know, that there is sharing of that. But I think at the end of the day, you know, there's an argument to be made that it does make people into better healthcare consumers, which is what I think we're all trying to do on the wellness side, make sure that we stay healthy. And then same thing, we're just, we're just not picking the most expensive plan. We're picking a plan that is advantageous. Because the reality of it is, is that somebody's paying for this thing, you know. And, you know, to get to Rick's point, when Rick said at a hundred and thirty dollars, which is essentially would be the employee's ten percent, but yet you had to go and absorb a twenty-five or a five thousand dollar deductible, I'd be like, I'm not taking that deal, you know. But from the town's perspective, you're saying, whoa, we can save thirty-three hundred dollars or three thousand dollars a year. The town would be like, we want that deal. So I think you have to look for some playground and compromise from a policy perspective to try to arrive at providing healthcare to our, to employees that's affordable to everybody. That's, that's a policy decision.
Can you share the communities that have opted for Luminos or can't you?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, when you were talking about your surgery story, you'll see that the town of Hookset is listed on your comparison as to how you compare to others. They offer the Luminos plan, the twenty-five hundred dollar deductible plan. I don't know exactly what the town's funding structure is. I think it was more on a tiered year one if you enroll year two, et cetera. But I met a gentleman at their open enrollment one year, and his wife is expecting a baby. So he had his math ready, he had talked to the provider already, and he knew that he would have X hundred dollars that he would be short in his HSA, and he had already set up a payment plan. So if, in his instance, it was certainly something you could plan on. It was predictable.
What are the two communities that they have the full replacement? I think that's what Sue was asking.
Yep, absolutely. The first group that I had that was a total replacement is Manchester Transit Authority. And the reason for that is they're enrolled while they are with local government center. However, they very much are linked to the city of Manchester, and the city of Manchester was pressuring them as a small employer within the city to, to offer or to move towards that plan design. And they have continued to fully fund their HSA. So their employees are whole. They contribute towards the plan. However, the HSA is continuously funded. The other group that's more recent that did a total replacement is the town of Seabrook. That is a unique approach where they're not electing to participate with an HSA, but they're electing to participate with an HRA, a health reimbursement arrangement, where that money belongs to the town as an employer. So if there are monies left over at the end of the year, it reverts back to the town as opposed to if the employer or the town had put the monies into an HSA, it belongs to the employee. So that's a unique approach. It's my first member that's partnering with the Luminos plan with an HRA. So they actually went out to bid for an HRA vendor. They have debit cards. So they would swipe their Luminos card at the pharmacy or the doctor's office, et cetera, to make sure it's applied towards the deductible. And then they have a debit card where the monies will come out of the HRA. But the employee has no skin in the game whatsoever.
So they're not contributing to the HRA?
They are not.
And they're not paying anything towards a premium either?
They are not. So they literally have no skin in the game. So that approach is a newer approach by the, as an employer, they see the lower cost plan of the high deductible, but yet they weren't willing to deposit money into a health savings account. Because once an employer deposits money into an HSA, it does belong to the employee, and there's no opportunity for an employer to recoup those funds. But the thought process is the employee then is going to spend those monies as they are their own, because they are, and they'll be wiser consumers, wiser spenders with their healthcare dollars.
Time will tell as we go through.
Time will tell, but.
Just one more point. One hour ago, you talked about behavioral patterns. And I fully agree with you that, you know, you having members learn how to work properly through the healthcare system. The problem is, I think if members do, in general, it's just our, our healthcare providers don't sometimes. And that's something that, I don't know where you can impact that or have Anthem or, or the other ones, the other big players deal with that. For example, one of my, one of my kids got sick on a weekend. So I called pediatrician and said, okay, you know, this kid probably needs some antibiotics or a strep throat. Well, we're not in the office today. Go to the ER. And I says, I am not going to go to the ER. He got better. But, but the thing is, that's, that's what's happening in real life. Is that, that, you know, you get, you said, okay, don't go to the ER unless you really need to. But you have your, because of whether it's a time of day or, or a holiday or something like that, we're being directed to do so. What are we supposed to do?
And that's the medical home pilot that I talked about earlier that Anthem is supporting and Harvard Pilgrim as well as the Citizens Health Initiative. You're absolutely right. We've got to get evening hours. We've got to get Saturday hours, Sunday hours. And not down in this area, you actually have quite a few urgent care centers, which aren't ideal because they don't know you when you walk in, but they are a good option. Up north, they don't have those abilities, and they have fewer primary care physicians. So we're actually seeing a larger increase there. So you're absolutely right. I think every year we make incremental increases in that, but we have, it takes time.
Right, and that's one thing, before you speak, I think the, the plans that you design with Anthem or whoever sometimes outpace, outpace what is happening in, on the street or in real life. You know, yes, we have urgent care centers that are propping up everywhere, but I think our, our insurance providers don't want to deal with it. And, you know, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how to address that.
And I think one of the ways is to keep offering a multitude of plans so that people can pick what works best for them. Because each of us sitting in this room would have a different family makeup or design or locations. So I think that is one of the pieces of advice that we give, is don't go in with a single plan design because that's very, very difficult and really having that range as to what works with each individual. And that's, it's hard because it's hard to explain. You know, when Debbie and Carrie come in and do your open annual enrollments, and you have that wonderful benefits fair that you do, it takes time. We've already spent, you know, an hour and a half, two hours going through all of this. And so those benefit educations are important, and plan choice is really important for individuals because all the comments you made are very accurate.
I would just say about the urgent care, I tell my employees, don't go to. Couple of years ago, I took my daughter to the hospital, we were in zero, we waited three hours like we always do. Got our service by this fine doctor. And next week, my wife got sick, heard about this urgent care in London area, saw the same doctor for the same condition. And the hospital was insured, the insurance would not pay the hospital. It was Elliot. Would not pay.
If that was a certain period of time, that's because the Elliot Urgent Care Center actually opened its doors and took patients before it was ready to process any insurances at all. That was a difficult, that was something that was out of our hands.
It goes to the point where, you know, the things are happening on the street way faster than, than the healthcare insurance companies. And that's, we, you know, we're on the assumption that we, you know, that we're good to go.
So on the whole, urgent care is less expensive.
Yes, it is.
So we should be encouraging the use.
Chief, please reconsider.
He's biting us to keep you out of the speech.
Yeah, hit or miss my stories that, I mean, we hear so many stories. Carrie, we could probably tell you from being out with our members and health cares and such, it's hit or miss with urgent care facilities. We always say, if you even think twice, is this the safest place for me to go right now, depending on my symptoms? Don't go. Go right to the emergency room. But if you have a sprain or you have a laceration that could have simple sutures or you need a, you want a strep test at midnight, when it makes sense to do so, then that's really when those facilities are probably more advantageous than not.
Sue, what other questions can we answer for you?
Yes, Deb, do you have one more exhibit to explain?
I do indeed. Are we ready to switch gears?
Yes.
This is, and I, there's a reason why I held it till the end.
It's the most complicated.
But I, the other thing is, we've talked a lot about, just by regular questions and conversation, we've talked about a lot of the pieces that are in here already. So I think now that we've talked about all of the other components, this will be easier to explain. So each and every year after our board meets, we do sit down and come up with a rate level that needs to be received from the town of Goffstown in order to pay anticipated claims. And this three-page summary is something that we can provide to you each and every year. How we start is on page one, line A, we start with your reported medical claims. So this is for, all of these numbers are one hundred percent accurate for the rate, I'm sorry, the anniversary or the renewal that you just went through for January of two thousand and twelve. And the reported medical claims that were utilized in setting your rate increase for two thousand and twelve was incurred July one of two thousand and ten through June thirty of two thousand and eleven and paid through July thirty-first of two thousand and eleven. And you see a little over one point one million dollars. And this is medical claims. Line B, your prescription drug claims. July one of two thousand and ten through June thirty of two thousand and eleven, a little over five hundred, five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. We add A and B together, and we come up with your total reported claims of one point six seven five million. Line D, this is the first part where Wendy was talking about you are rated on your own. You're an individually rated group, and there's a greater impact of your own utilization, your own claims because of your size, but you're not entirely on your own. So here's the first point that we'd want to make. If you had a claim in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that excess would be removed in line D. For this time period, you didn't have any, so you'll see that there's a zero there. E, reported net claims, is still the one point six seven five million. Line F, we add medical and prescription drug IBNR, and IBNR is incurred but not yet reported. There's always a bit of a lag, and we, for this period, we chose a two percent IBNR adjustment. So you'll see a little over thirty-three percent, I'm sorry, thirty-three thousand dollars there. Excuse me, leaving line G with your total rating claims of one point seven million dollars. You turn it over to page two. Every year, it's, we also have to add medical trend, what's going on in the marketplace for various, various things. And that is of no, all of our groups have the exact same medical trend. And for this time period, we utilized eight percent medical trend. And if it, if any of you folks are familiar with medical trends, they're pretty universal. You can hear about medical trends in the public sector and the private sector. Having a single-digit medical trend makes me just so thrilled. I always love it when it's below ten percent.
But see, I think that is. But see, I think that is the part of the problem, is that I'm excited to see that too, but at 8% compounded, I mean, that's, that's also when our taxpayers ask us, oh, keep the tax rate the same, or it should be no greater than cost of living or something. But when you're, if your medical trending is 8%, and it represents 1.8 million dollars or so, I mean, or more, I mean, it, it's a difficult, it's a difficult process, which money has to come from somewhere else, that's all I'm saying.
Right.
And I just want to point out for everyone's benefit, and many of you may know this, that medical trend is different from CPI. Often people try to use them interchangeably, and utilization is a compilation of a whole bunch of things. It's new technologies that are going to come out, it's new specialty drugs that come out, it's frequency, it's severity, it is the cost as well, but it is the entire market basket what we expect it to increase, not just the cost factor. So I just want to make sure people understand that.
People have asked me this, and I, I don't know the answer to it, but when, when you see like Elliot River, Rivers Edge, and you see CMC expansions and all these urgent cares, which usually Elliot or CMC is funding, and, and we have brand-new facilities, and Norris Cotton Cancer, I mean, you look at, I mean, it's just unbelievable the amount of money that has been put in over the last 10 years. Is that part of that?
That's all part of that, yes.
Okay, so whether it be consumers are demanding it, or it's being provided for and they're recouping their costs.
Yep, it's all factored in there.
The factor of the matter is, is that our, you know, our, I don't know if we're better than we were, say, 10, 10 years ago, but that's, that's the reason probably why this thing is going at a, a 8% when you're building brand-new facilities.
It's one component of it, there's a whole bunch of components that go in. So does that have an impact? It absolutely does have an impact, new biotech drugs being developed, which would be very similar to that.
Or new technologies that they're paying for.
New technologies, yeah, you know, x-rays, where CAT scans, where MRIs, so it, it's on a combination of all of that, but you're right, that's absolutely one factor in that basket.
And like we said in the beginning, and 8% is great, so in the grand scheme of things, it's still high. So for here, you'll see that it's an 8% annual trend factor, however, it's, there's, there are 18 months in the rate-setting process, and that's compounded over those 18-month rates, so it ultimately becomes 12.2%, leaving, adding for medical trend, line H, a little over 200,000 dollars. pooled claims fee, this is when, in line D, on page one, for any of those member groups that have the claims in excess of 150,000 dollars removed from their rate setting, we do then put them back in, and everyone shares to recoup those differences, and that's a factor of 4.2%. So even though you didn't have any of those high claims, you did share in the others who did, and again, it's another pooling feature.
And I will say that we, as health trusts, used to purchase this reinsurance or stop, specific stop off outside in the commercial carrier. We then determined we could do it inside by spreading the risk, as Debbie indicated, so that if it's not needed, then it can stay within the rating and be returned to members. So that's a factor that you may not see in a traditional commercial insurer, you would see that listed as reinsurance, and we call it a pooling fee, but they're really the same thing. It's just a self-funding of that process.
So hypothetically, on, on line D, if we had one catastrophic case, that was a half a million dollars, where would that show up?
That would show up on...
Would it show up on line D?
Yes.
A and D.
A and D, so...
You have some in A and some in D.
Okay.
So the entire amount would be in A, and then we would subtract out any amount in excess of 150,000.
So track down to D and, and we'd be part of the pool on the I.
And I would say that historically, you probably have these, and you'll have them moving forward, and you will see fluctuations. Some years you will be contributing to that pool, and some day, some years you will be benefiting by that.
Okay, so that's basically, it's our reinsurance for any catastrophic loss for 150,000 dollars or more in an individual case.
Yes, and that's shared with everyone that's renewing.
Everybody, so we're paying 80-something thousand dollars for that feature, that reinsurance feature?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so if we add G and H together, oh, sorry, J, health, the LGC, Local Government Center, Health Trust Risk Fee, we do need to charge a risk fee and maintain a healthy member's balance target, which is established by our Board of Directors. 1% was added in line J, so G plus H multiplied by 1% equals the 19,000 dollars in row J. Return of net assets, there have been years where if that member's balance target is exceeded, we do return a percentage back to our members, and there was a 0% return of net assets in this renewal period. Lines L and M address administrative fees. We do pay Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield to negotiate with providers, we pay them to process all of our claims, and that currently is a 3.7% fee, which equates to almost 71,000 dollars on your rate setting. Local Government Center, Health Trust Administrative Fee is about 3.6%, resulting in a little over 69,000.
Are those fees holding steady?
They are holding steady, and that also includes your wellness reimbursements in that line fee. We consider it administrative costs, even though some of that cost is returned to employees.
Projected member contributions, this is your, we have to take a snapshot in time of your enrollment, your single, two-person and family rates. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Projected member contributions are G through M added, you have a little over 2.1 million there, and then line O is that snapshot in time. So you have your snapshot of your 2011 rates times your single, two-person and family counts, and that gives you a little over 1.8 million dollars. Just taking that 2.15 and then the 1.84, if you go to line P on the final page, if you were just alone, your group experience, you would have received a 17.3% increase, because we expect that we'll need 2.1 million to pay claims by 12/31/12, and by, based on your current enrollment, we had the 1.8%, I'm sorry, 1.8 million resulting in that 17.3% increase. However, circling back to what Wendy had mentioned about your credibility, so you certainly are individually rated, but we don't see anyone as truly on their own until they have 1,000 or more eligible employees. So we see that you're 38.5% credible. So 38.5% of the time, your claims are going to be exactly the, the same each and every year. So if you take 38.5% of the 17.3%, that gives you 8.4%. I'm sorry.
No.
I'm sorry, I, I do this and I get ahead of myself ancient every time. All right, so line R, what was the overall for the January renewal cycle, and that was 8.4%. So 38.5% of your 17.3%, and then you have the difference, so 100 minus your 38.5 is based on the 8.4%. So this is another pooling feature. So a greater percentage of your increase is based off of the overall line R, less of it is based off of the 17.3, which is you on your own, leaving you with a seven, an 11.8% credible rate change. The reconciled rate change, each year, your projected contribution must add up, so there's a rounding or a reconciliation, excuse me, factor, bringing your 11.8% to a 9.9. And then there have been years that we need to cap certain groups. Fortunately, it's been some time, but we have had to cap at certain levels, and then anyone that exceeds that cap, that's another pooling feature where you would all share in the cost of over and above that cap, but there was no capping at this point. So the 9.9 stayed at the 9.9 in line U.
And just the credible rate change, because we go through this mathematical calculation for everyone, and in the January group, I think we have about 30 groups that renew, because most fall in the under 100 pool in January, and then we have a dozen or so individually rated groups, and that credibility factor is just to get us back to the overall increase. So this year, it was beneficial for you to be part of Local Government Center. Had you been, you know, direct on your own without that sharing of costs, your increase would have been larger. And I'm sure in your history, you've been on the other end of that as well, because it does fluctuate back and forth.
Do you know, I can, if our rates would be better or worse if we did go in with the school?
We do not.
You don't?
No. And one, just...
Ask Ray tomorrow.
Yeah, you can certainly look at rate levels. The other thing, because the school is in a July renewal, and for July renewals, we do what's called a guaranteed maximum rate that we set in the fall, and so you would need to commit to that, looking at that in August, so that we can pull the data, look at that together, or you'd have to wait a year to do that. It's not something that we can do mid-year, because we're going to rate each group as it is. So that's more of a long-term decision, because obviously in the next month or so, you're not going to make that, but you could look at that for next fall to take a look at that, and we could certainly model for you in between that timeframe.
Yeah, initially, I can look at the morning, Sue, and see, for exactly the same plans that you have here, would it be higher or lower?
That would be great.
Sure, it could just be that simple.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Phil.
The actual decision of combining those groups, how is that made? I mean, obviously, if, obviously, they would want to know how we're going to affect them. It's easy for us to sit here and say, well, gee, if we benefit by going into them, we want to do that. But then again, they may look and say, you know, Goffstown's going to, if, if the town of Goffstown joins our group, we're going to go up. We don't want them.
Yeah, so it is a combination process. So in order to actually go through a proposal process to give you the exact numbers, and Debbie can share the plan numbers now, it takes a letter from each governing board to indicate that they want to look at that, and then there is a contract that both boards would have to sign that outlines how long you're combined for, what it takes to get out of being combined, and who can make that decision and when.
Yeah, many times, just at the start of saying, here are all of our letters of interest, we extract all the claims, you share the rate levels, and sometimes the deal is over right then and there. So you're absolutely right, someone's going to go up and someone's going to go down, by how much is really whether or not it's workable.
Well, the key is, I would think, it's what's it look like over a three- to five-year picture, because if you just look at it in one year, it's rather difficult, but if you see that over a five-year period, it's kind of negligible, and you eliminate some of the higher spikes and...
Yeah, so you can look at past experience to get kind of a judge of that, and then where you would be today.
And if you take out the volatility of it, it, it may be worthwhile for anyone, simply because you can budget better, and you don't have to worry about wild, wild, wild fluctuations.
And then there was a specific line item about healthcare reform, in which...
We should have a decision Thursday.
Thursday at 10:00, actually.
But no one's, but no one's watching.
But there is a great article in our most recent Town and City Magazine, and I brought enough to share with everyone, if, if you're interested, I can leave them behind. It's something that we're, I'm sure you know are following closely.
And I know your website.
Yeah, I was going to say, go to our website, we have a lot of information there. That's great, we will be issuing lots of information once we see what the decision is and where we're going with that, so time will tell. It's a short time.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm exhausted.
You got all those numbers running around.
I, I need to go into a stress class.
Step into the hallway, no, I'm just kidding.
Just before we leave, I just would like to say how much we appreciate the fact that the town of Goffstown trusts us with your benefits, and we hope we have the ability to keep working with you. From everything I think Carrie presented, you will participate very well with our programs, and you have made a difference, your employees participate very well in our trainings. Debbie has come, and I know is very excited to do your benefit fair each year, so we thank you for that and for your commitment, and if you have any follow-up questions, we'd be happy to come back or email you information, whatever you'd like.
Actually, just a comment, I think this is the, the third time that I've had a presentation. I was on the school board before this, and each time, it's better, you, you're incredibly knowledgeable about your plans and the process, and I always learn something from this, and I'm just very impressed at, you know, how much, how much you know, and we value that as well. So I know there's a lot of discussion about, I've even said, you know, we should shop, et cetera, and I think that is a healthy thing to do, but that doesn't discount the fact that I think you're incredibly talented in what you do, and you did a great presentation here for us, I really appreciate it.
Great, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many would you like?
Do you all get Town and City? Do you get a publication?
I think we're all sick, because these are all department heads, and they all get them, and the board members all get them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And it is on the website, if you want to...
Carl had to leave because he had wellness tonight, right? He had spinning class.
Nice.
You know, he catch empty small boxes.
Motion to adjourn.
Let's not be too quick now.
What else is there to do?
It's not 8:30.
Public comment, 8:30.
9 o'clock, it's ice cream.
Thank you. If there's any, this final discussion regarding the presentation we had, I don't know.
Well, it, I think it's a, the package we're all explained and something we can make reference to, and it's probably, Sue is going to research some options.
We'll have some more answers, and when we get to that point of having a total compensation discussion, which is one of your goals, we can schedule a meeting for that. But don't throw these away, keep them, because you'll need them.
This is really good. And it was in our packet from last week, a total compensation...
Policy statement.
Policy from another community.
Right, from Anova.
So we need to extract that and save it to one side.
Yes.
Was there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Wow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Andrew, you may shut down.